Good morning, everyone. It's 11:00 a.m., Wednesday, May 8, 2024. The Henry County Commissioners' meeting will come to order. If you would please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short prayer.
Pledge of Allegiance, to comply of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity of this glorious day. We pray for your guidance as we go about our business. In your name we pray, amen. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes of the last meeting? If so, is there a motion?
To approve as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims?
Make a motion except claims presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll?
Make a motion except payrolls presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. We have three food and beverage claims. The first one is for Holiday Construction Group for the Basketball Hall of Fame. One hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. There's also a claim from the food and beverage funds for BW Construction for the Basketball Hall of Fame in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-one cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. The third and final food and beverage claim is for Holiday Construction Group for the Basketball Hall of Fame, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Brings us to the Corey Murphy EDC update. Welcome, Corey.
Good morning, Commissioners. I gave you a green folder.
Is your microphone on?
It is. Maybe I need to get a little closer?
Please.
All right. I too want to talk about food and beverage briefly and introduce a scope change or ask for a scope change on a grant that our office received. So in the left-hand side of your pocket, you have a document that says "Original Scope", and then you have a document behind it that has the "Welcome to Newcastle" sign. So we were awarded food and beverage grant funds to do two things. One is to make some improvements to the main floor of the Murphy Building, and that is pretty well done. The second aspect was to place kiosks at different locations across the county. And so that's a picture of that is on the Original Scope page. The new scope or change is instead of the standard kiosks, I would like to do an electronic message board at the corner of 3 and 38 on city-owned property and place it somewhere around the "Welcome to Newcastle" sign. But the primary message of the electronic message board would be tourism-related events, including events held all across the county. For example, if Middletown is having a festival, then it could be advertised on this sign. Same goes with Knightstown or the Moreland Fair. So yes, the sign would be located in Newcastle, but it would promote tourism-related events from all across the county. The actual programming of the sign would be handled from our office. It can be done electronically, and there's no impact on the budget in terms of the amount of money that we have left to draw down would fund this sign.
That was going to be my next question. Was it, is it within the remaining fund balance? Do you have a preference? Well, I just, we don't care which option you do. It's the same price, correct? Whether you do it side by side or vertical?
I've been asking stakeholders, and the overwhelming preference is to go above.
I'm just pausing to see if there's anybody else having questions.
You assume liability for everybody staring at it runs through the intersection, right?
I'm sorry?
I said you assume all liability for anybody staring at it drives through the intersection, right?
Why that intersection? It's one of the busiest intersections in the county, not on an interstate, and the city-owned property makes it easier to place.
So you're, I'm assuming that you'll reach out to all the towns to let them know what the process is to get everything on there?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the change in the original scope of food and beverage with the same dollar figure attached.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Also in your folder is an infographic that talks about our impact over the last few years. This was created as a result of Economic Development Week, which is sponsored by the International Economic Development Council, which is our trade association. So I'll leave that for your review. A lot of good activity, much of which wouldn't be possible without the support of county government. On the right-hand side of your folder is an update on Ready 2.0. As you may know, our region Forge East Central Indiana was awarded $35 million. This is the second highest funding amount, but more importantly, it's the highest increase from Ready 1 to Ready 2. So we're really pleased with that performance. A common question is, and rightly so, well, what projects are going to be funded? And I'm here to give a little bit more information on that, but nothing definite. Project selection, it's a fluid and dynamic process, subject to input from the region and the state. An initial meeting between the East Central Indiana Regional Partnership and the State of Indiana is occurring yet this week, and then I'm sure that the Ready Regional Steering Committee, of which Jennifer Fox from the foundation and myself, will attend that meeting and get additional information. Projects that are selected for funding, they must align with state priorities, and a complete financing package needs to be in place, most importantly, match. The projects mentioned in this update were submitted in the open call for projects last fall. That was October and November of 2023. The partnership, along with consulting assistance from HWC Engineers, employed a project rubric and scoring system. A wide cross-section of regional stakeholders from every participating county were invited to review the projects. It was a lot of information, a lot of projects, and a tight timeline in scoring. A few people in this room participated. At the end of January of 2024, right before the plan submission, Henry County's projects looked like this. Tier one projects, so there was a top 20 projects from the region, Newcastle Residential, so that's a city-owned Washington Street parcel between the Wilberite School and Salvation Army, and then property owned by Myers Realty Investment, and it's south of Nixon Drive and west of Taco Bell. So it's a single-family home residential construction, which was a big priority in the state's program. Another project was Spice Lynn Mixed Use. That is land between Flying J and Pierce Parkway. It is a hotel and commercial development. Tier two projects, the Courthouse Annex redevelopment. Now that that is, the litigation over that property is satisfied, and the ownership is being transferred from the county to the city, it is back in the mix. State Road 109 Water Extension from Knightstown to north of I-70 scored very well, and wastewater improvements from Exit 123, so right by the truck stops there, just south of the interstate to Lewisville, that's the South Henry Regional Waste District project. And then tier three projects were all other projects submitted from the county. The scoring was a tool. It doesn't necessarily mean that a project in tier three can't move up and receive funding, but this is the way the region chose to demonstrate to the state what projects were available for their investment. The next document in your packet looks like this. And this is a snippet of information on the Lilly Endowment funding. So the governor announced at his State of the State address earlier this year that the Lilly Endowment was providing $250 million to the state, and so this is in addition to Ready. So our region received 35 million from Ready. We'll have an opportunity to go after Lilly Endowment funding for projects that fit into two different categories, blight reduction and redevelopment, and then arts and cultural initiative. The same match requirements apply. The same process applies. The region has been invited to submit four projects in each of these categories. Those projects may come from the call for projects, or if there are other projects out there that we're aware of that fit this criteria, we may have an opportunity to receive funding. And then the final document is the frequently asked questions. I may have provided this to you in the past, but it's more detail on match and key performance indicators of the program. Any questions regarding Ready?
I don't have any.
No questions for Corey?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Corey. Anyone here from the chamber? And we don't have an insurance update. I don't see anyone from the Health Department. Corners off.
Right there.
Speak, speak.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Julia Surtel. I'm an intern at the Health Department. I work for Shea Maranda on the Drug Free Communities Grant, and I presented our map. We've made a map of the Henry County community. It took a very long time to put together. We're very proud of it. The purpose of the map for the LIV Coalition is outlining all the protective factors and risk factors for youth alcohol and otherwise substance use, including tobacco and nicotine products. So if we flip our map over here, I feel like it's awkwardly far away, but I know that's the best place for, to be safe by everyone. We have health services pinned in purple. We have alcohol retailers in pink and tobacco retailers in orange. Churches are in gold. Parks are outlined in green, and blue is other community organizations, like areas, et cetera. So these are all the resources, both positive and negative, that exist in the community. It's a great resource because it outlines really well where resources are clustered, but also where risk factors are clustered. Alcohol and tobacco retailers are very prevalent in Newcastle, especially towards downtown, but you see quite a few alcohol and tobacco retailers even in rural areas of the map, which is definitely important information. We're utilizing this for the LIV Coalition. This coalition is broken down into three subcommittees. We have a subcommittee for alcohol prevention for youth, a subcommittee for tobacco and nicotine product use prevention for youth, and a mental health suicide prevention subcommittee. So all of these resources that exist in the community are really helpful for us to outline where youth are getting the substances from, if they're able to acquire them, and what protective factors we can utilize should determine if they're here.
That's good.
Very nice. Thank you so much for your presentation.
No, thank you so much. Thank you for allowing me to. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Brayden? You don't have anything?
Brian. I miss Brian.
Brian? You're good? Steve Rest? The award-winning surveyor's office.
Good morning. We're ready to do this award, but I'd like to bring due appreciation of trusting us, that we took our money, and the 105,000 dollars to deal with, and a couple of bits that we got awarded on first in the state to finish our second quarter. So we said, President, we've got noticed a bunch by other counties now, and it wasn't real like we were doing, so I'll let you do it, so you can have a look.
So we won the state finalists at the ACED 36A Walter Meery Excellence Award. And the project is among the recent all those second quarters, and also all the historic data that is along with that standard, available for being on the surveyors, anyone who can access that information without having to come into the office, hopefully can make the surveying a little quicker, maybe a little cheaper because it's taking a lot of time on the surveyors. I did load up some video from that award ceremony. It's very good.
I don't know if he's running the mask, but my hands are all red. Hang on. Let me try to get it right. Sorry. Starting on the 22nd, we're upgrading all of this stuff.
You're right, it's a very short video. I didn't even see it.
With the lull in the action, we certainly do appreciate all the work that you have done.
The state finalist award goes to USI Consultants and Henry County, Indiana, for their project, Henry County Section Corner GIS and Database Development. Henry County maintains and updates section corner records per the state requirement. To make surveys more affordable and accessible, USI was entrusted to organize and make their records available online via GIS. This remote accessibility improves the county's health and sustainability, as well as protect records from damage and loss. Congratulations on this excellent project.
I would like to thank Derek and USI, and they did make it simple and quickly. I was probably thinking two-year project, we got them less than a year.
Congratulations, and thank you, USI and Derek. Josh, do you have anything on behalf of the Sheriff's Office other than the ice machine? We'll deal with it later. Okay, thank you. Debbie?
Debbie's not here.
Turk's office. Memorial Park. Assessor's office.
Lisa doesn't have anything either.
And Brian? Brian isn't?
I think we're.
We're done?
Yeah, nobody on the department, nobody else is here on departments.
Next, we'll go to the quotes. We do have a jail kitchen ice machine that we received three quotes on. It was in need of repair. It was described as being a twenty-some-year-old machine and had been moved from the old jail to the new jail. And the three quotes that we have. The least amount of money for the ice machine was five thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and forty-four cents from Duncan Supply, and the installation would be one thousand, two hundred dollars by, the installation was? Resolve Tech? Okay. So with the three quotes that we have been provided, is there a motion in regards to the replacement of the ice machine at the jail?
I'll make the motion to approve the five thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and forty-four cents from Duncan Supply Company, along with the twelve hundred dollars for Resolve Tech.
I do have one question. Josh, does this, this meets all your guys' needs? This machine, it's big enough to handle everything you need it to do, right? Okay. I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next, we have a request for permission to use one of the lots from Shonda Kane.
This is for Memorial, the Memorial Day Parade. They typically use the east lot on the Justice Center to set things up. It's just, they've done it every year. So I'll make the motion to allow the use of the east lot of the Justice Center for the Memorial Day Parade by the Chamber.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. New Business Livestream Services, Kevin?
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm here today to get signatures on what is called community governance and resolution. We've been doing public rural public transportation in your county for at least ten years since I've been there.
And we've been doing it for over 20 as a company as a whole. Nothing's changing. It's just more paperwork coming down from the FTA going through NDOT that they want these signed. It doesn't change anything. It just says that you understand that Jay County is our pass-through commissioners, and we still do the same thing, and that I would be your point of contact for any questions or concerns.
Joel, did you have any questions or concern? You're good. That's what I figured.
Yeah, Debbie's office was nice enough to give you those copies.
I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero.
May I approach to get the signatures there?
The DLZ, I sent Megan a spreadsheet to go with the DLZ. Not the DLZ one. Is there a spreadsheet?
And once I have Jay County's signatures, I will give Debbie's office a copy.
Okay.
I have a copy.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And meet with them on the 13th, next Monday, so I will send all signed copies to you.
Okay.
Sir?
And she'll, yeah, she just went to get copies of.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you want to move on to the next one until Debbie comes back with the other document that went with the DLZ?
So we're going to move on to the Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement by Bill Duff Church.
He's not in here. They're processing tax, they're processing tax payments. He can't come. So this is just a standard conflict of interest for Bill. He's doing some woodworking here for the county. So I will make a motion to accept the conflict of interest for Bill Duff Church.
This is for the countertop.
Yep, uh-huh, correct.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Then next on the agenda, we have the Board of Health appointments. We've received information in regards to two people that have stepped down from the Henry County Board of Health, and we have two appointments that are recommended. One appointment is Mrs. Amy Lavon, and one appointment is Ms. Kelsey Myers.
That goes with the DLZ.
Do we have a motion in regards to those two appointments?
I will make the motion to accept these two appointments to the Board of Health.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept those two appointments for the Board of Health. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. We do have Angela here. Angela, did you have anything for the Health Department? Okay, thank you. Next, we have information in regards to DLZ and the work that's going to be done on the courthouse buildings.
So through the different meetings, we've narrowed everything down as to what the different projects are. So I went through this document and created a spreadsheet. Council will get the same thing. If we do everything that was presented in the documents, they have broken it down by If we do everything that was presented in the documents, they have broken it down by minimum and maximum, or low, probable low, probable high. So with contingencies, their fees, if everything comes in at the minimum, that's $5,436,415, which is within the amount of our bond that we have. We have $5,467,849.31 available, so that if everything comes in at the minimum, it will stay within the bond amount. If it's within the maximum amount, and I don't know where your spreadsheet is, Joe, but in the maximum amount, the subtotal with the contingencies and the fees from DLZ is $6,978,105, which puts us with the bond, puts us over... Sorry, and I got the number wrong at the bottom. $1,510,255.69 would be over what we would need from the bond. So we would need ARP money. Actually, it's in $1,510,255.69 of ARP monies.
So what I'd like to do is if we can make a decision to move forward today so that the council could approve or not approve at their meeting this afternoon.
Commissioner, any comments?
I was just reading on some of the alternatives, as far as updating the fire alarm features. Didn't we just do some of those, the warnings and stuff? Maintenance is already done?
That's not in there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not in, what maintenance has done has all been taken out.
All right.
Everything that has been done, the air handlers, all that stuff has already been removed. You'll notice that there's blank spots for those. Everything else is included.
I'll second that motion.
Well, I hadn't made a motion yet.
I thought you already said that.
No.
Well, then, I make a motion that will approve this.
Okay. So Joel, I guess we'll need to, it'd have to be contingent upon the ARP resolution being approved, so.
I don't have a problem going forward with it.
Okay.
We've been hanging on to this for how long now, so...
So I will second that. Actually, I'm going to have a discussion here for a second. How much monies do you want to appropriate from ARP? Do you want to just the exact dollar figure? Looking at that, it's probably going to fall somewhere between the low probable and high
I don't have a problem doing mid-range, because we can always go back and amend if we have to.
Okay, you want to divide that out and make that your motion?
You want me to do math?
Or how about do this, just do up to 1 point? You can do up to 1 point? Okay.
Let's just do that, and that covers us that way.
Up to, and then, okay. So your motion is to approve this up to the $1,510,255.69 ARP money? Okay, I will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0.
And then the purchase agreement's the last thing we have.
Next, we have a purchase agreement.
This is for the Walmart Outlet. We received a purchase agreement, well, we received a letter of intent, and then I think at the last meeting, we approved moving forward the letter of intent. They have presented us with a purchase agreement of $280,000 for the purchase of the Walmart Which, unless there's any questions, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve this purchase agreement, contingent upon council's approval tonight, as they have to prove it. That's the dollar figure's above 150.
Above 50.
Above 50,000, yeah, above 50,000 dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes 3-0. Resolution for the Part-Time Health Worker Opioid Funds, Resolution 2024-0508006.
You can probably start reading at the "now therefore..." Yeah, "now therefore be it resolved."
"Now therefore be it resolved," the sum of $31,854 is allocated to the Henry County Health Department to pay the portion of the salary and cost of employing a part-time community health worker from June 1, 2024 until May 31, 2025. Additional expenditures of the funds received from the settlements shall be approved by separate resolution. A list of expenditures of the abatement share funds received by Henry County is attached to this resolution as Exhibit A. Effective date, this resolution shall be made effective upon passage and appropriation of the amount set forth herein by the Henry County Council. All resolutions or part resolutions in conflict herewith are hereby repealed.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-05-08006.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes 3-0. We have an additional ordinance, Ordinance Number 2024-05-08002. "Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Indiana, and the County Council of Henry County, Indiana, as follows. A cumulative, non-reverting fund entitled Henry County Building Maintenance and Improvement Fund is hereby established. Revenue received from the sale of real property owned by Henry County shall be allocated to the fund. Revenue allocated to the fund shall be utilized solely for the purpose of paying repairs, maintenance, and improvements on properties owned by Henry County. Effective date, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon passage serviceability. Any provision contained in this ordinance which is found by a court of competent jurisdiction to be unlawful or by operation of law, including subsequent legislative enactment, is rendered inapplicable, shall be omitted, and the rest and remainder of this ordinance shall remain in effect, full force and effect. All ordinance that are in conflict with the terms of this ordinance are hereby repealed and effective this date of this ordinance." This would require the Henry County Board of Commissioners to sign it, along with the members of the Henry County Council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I will second it. This is being done so that we can kind of put some money back to maintain other buildings as we sell properties, instead of just it going back to wherever. And we have to spend a lot of money out of the general fund, out of our budget, to maintain the buildings, and this will give a little bit of a potential breathing room for a little bit. Not really very long, because we spend a lot of money for maintaining buildings, but it'll be gone in six months, next year. But anyway, it'll at least put it in that fund for maintaining the buildings, so I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0.
No one's here from the public.
Do we have any comments from anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.